The council is to appoint someone as acting mayor for this evening, so.
I would move that Roger Peterman be serving this evening as president.
Second.
We'll call John, Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman? Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
We have a meeting to order and arise from it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You must have just had counted his roll call when you took the vote. I already.
My call!
Okay, do you want me to call the roll again?
I don't think, I'm not.
I don't think we need to.
First item on the agenda is minutes of the December 21 meeting. Any comments or corrections?
No, still approved.
Supposedly being seconded.
We'll call phone.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
You don't vote, correct?
I do.
Does he vote? Does he vote?
Yes, I don't give up your right to vote because you're filling in for the mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Peterman? Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
This doesn't happen very often.
Okay. As our custom, the next item on the agenda is visitors and communications. John, in the audience that would like to address council. Mr. Fowler. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Fowler, I live at 71 Bluegrass, Fort Thomas, right down the street here. I'm a lifelong resident of our city. I'm a retired mechanical engineer, then we designed and supported reduction gears and generator sets for the US Navy over the world. I mention that because I want you to know I'm a meticulous note taker, documenter, problem solver, perfectionist, as my wife on, I can attest to, as most engineers are. Many of you know me, I've served on the planning commission for the last thirty years, twenty-five years as the chair. Tonight I want to review some history in agreement, which relate to the reconstruction and assessment of property owners along Churchill Drive. I'm a lifelong member of St. Paul United Church of Christ and serve as chairman of their housing grounds committee. Ron Dell and I discussed the current assessment yesterday, and he suggested I come and speak to you tonight. You all have a copy of a letter dated 17 December 2015 that I sent to Ron, which facilitated our discussion yesterday. It outlines the terms in original agreement between the city, the church, and the developer. Churchill Drive was constructed in eighty-six, eighty-seven timeframe, some thirty years ago, but history sometimes gets clouded. The church was a third party to the arrangement. The prime negotiations were between the city and the developer, which was Norbert Schneider. As such, the church was not copied in all formal documents created and signed, but I have many documents between the city council, or church, excuse me, church council and the city. These are basis of my letter of 17 December 2015. Stepping back in time, some ten years even before the construction of Churchill Drive, the church was involved with the state of Kentucky in the development of the driveway connection to Grand tires and the relocation of Grand Avenue. The state condemned slash purchase property from the church for minimum dollars after a lengthy court battle, about five years worth, over the value of the right of way for foot frontage to Grand Avenue. When the idea of the connector road came up, take traffic off of Newman Avenue and Chesapeake due to the development of Gettysburg, the church was contacted by the city and the developer. I became the point of contact for the church. Through this relationship, the city administrator and the mayor learned of my design, development, and documentation skills, and soon after I was asked to join the planning commission, a position I truly enjoy to this day. Being true to my inner engineering nature throughout the process, I drew blueprints and wrote many guideline statements to educate our congregation and ensure all of our understanding of the project. These were shared many times with the city and the developers. In my letter of 17 December 2015, I repeat the guideline statement sent to Jeff Earlywine on February 25, 1986. There were seventeen points made. The most important from the standpoint of the future church expenses were, A, that the water and gas service could be relocated as required from Newman Avenue. And aside note to that, we didn't relocate them at that time, we subsequently relocated the gas service, but it was, monies were set aside and the city agreed that if something happened under the Churchill development, that they would bear the cost of fixing it. It's some, probably thirty feet under there, most of it. And B, all future repairs to connector road curves, storm sewers were to be at the city's expense, no assessments. The final item was added because of the legal battle in what was considered a less-than-fair forced purchase by the state of Kentucky, that ten years earlier down on Grand Avenue. So we were very attuned to that subject. The history was shared with everyone, so you Jeff Earlywine. Council simply wanted to generate, our church council simply wanted to generate a no-cost solution to the church in the future. It's important that we, before the connector, we probably had a fifty-foot frontage on Newman Avenue, and now we have some four hundred feet. And I really don't remember any assessments on Newman Avenue in my lifetime, but I don't really know. And talking with Ron, it's my understanding that the city records reviewed to date neither agreed to or denied this non-assessment approach I've referenced. With all that said, I ask that the council, based upon the terms of the guideline statement sent to Jeff in 1986, remove the assessment placed upon St. Paul United Church of Christ and furnish the letter to the church as no future assessment will be made for our records. In addition, I think it's important that the city should document the original agreement, provide funds in the event of any future water service problems underneath Churchill Drive. Like I mentioned before, the gas has been relocated, it bored directly from the street down to our front wall and relocated the gas meter on our front wall, so we have no issues with that anymore. Thank you, and I have a copy when I just out, if you want me to?
So the request is, is that the city waived the assessment?
Thank you.
Yes. And that just remembers the audience, that assessment ordinance is actually going to be anchored on later today's meeting.
Yeah, we were talking about that earlier, if we were doing this here for now, may I be a bit moved into this issue?
Right, and that ordinance is based on the standard policy of the city regarding improvements on roads and front foot assessment payments from property owners. Ron, do you have a recommendation?
Well, I don't know that I have a recommendation, let me review if I can, the facts as we have them available. I've crafted kind of a overview of what exists in the city record, and not, not anything contrary to what you just heard from Mr. Fowler. The agreement is in city offices that was, well, really a four-party agreement, there were two different developers, the city and the church, that outlined a lot of the details of transfers of property, timing of transfers, the type of construction, the methods of construction, the timing of the project, and so forth. There were no details specific to church property and agreements with the city in that document. I was unable to obtain a copy of the revised guideline statement, although clearly Mr. Fowler was authoring letters on February 25 of 1986, because I did find a file that contains a number of items of correspondence related to the project from early on. It's inclusive of correspondence between all those same parties, the highway department, transportation department, granting the, the point of entry off of Grand Avenue, because that's a state route, and so forth. And, and there were two letters in this file that were authored by Mr. Fowler, but they did not directly relate it to any type of specific agreement with the city. So from that, and again, Mr. Fowler and I had an opportunity to meet yesterday to kind of share information of what we were able to obtain within our records, and I indicated to him that, you know, I was not in a position to grant that waiver, so Jan and I have reviewed all the information that we have, and really, I guess, the only thing of that could be considered in front of council, so. Jan, I don't know if you want to add to that. I will add one other thing, I did speak with Jeff Earlywine by phone, and I won't speak for Jeff, other than just, he just didn't recall a lot of the details, and obviously it was thirty years ago. He said that, you know, if it's not in the file, then he wouldn't have any, you know, insight as to where we might locate that type of document. He did recall that there were specific items that the church had requested and that had been performed at the time of initial construction, it had more to do, his recollection had more to do with, you know, relocating the driveway and some of the improvements that were on the property within the right of way that would be affected by the construction itself, but not necessarily referencing a document, so.
If this were to be referred to committee, what committee would be appropriate to refer to? I mean, is it labor law license, is it public?
Public Works.
Public Works.
Finance.
Finance. Finance, it could be any of them.
Well, I mean, what, what committee, did this ordinance, assessment ordinance go before a committee, come from a committee? Would seem to me would have, would be consistent with that, when we're talking about the payment of an assessment, and a waiver of that, is that, is that something?
That would come through the Public Works.
Public Works.
Public Works, yeah. But it has to do with special assessments, which would normally be your finance committee.
The actual payment of the assessment.
I think the unfortunate thing, and I think Dan, but we agree the unfortunate thing, the city doesn't have, nor does Dan, have any kind of a confirmation that the city accepted the guidelines, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It was a, a letter outlining, this is what the church wants, this is the church's expectations, and of course, it'd be a lot simpler if we were all sitting here and we had some kind of response from the city to those specific requests of guidelines, and I think Dan's acknowledged they don't, and we haven't been able to find anything.
Now, policy, that ordinance is based, that ordinance is based on a policy, or is there, or is there an actual ordinance, separate ordinance dealing with assessments and how owners, property owners are assessed? Or that?
It was a front footage, and we have one tonight, and it.
Right, and so that's per ordinance, I mean, and so we have a policy, we've had a longstanding policy, and I can't remember exactly what the percentages are. I mean, I know they're fifty-fifty.
Actually, on this project, because it was a total reconstruction, it was discussed under revised statute, however, it's a city policy with regard to how we assess on a reconstruction project. With a total reconstruction project, there's an engineering estimate of the equivalent cost of an overlay, and then that, that estimate is carried forward as the actual front foot cost. So it's not our traditional sixty-forty split, or how we do our other streets when it's a reconstruction project.
Okay, so I don't know the percentages, but just from the ordinance, it's, city costs fifteen thousand eighty, eighty-six cents a foot, and ten thousand fifty cents for the property owners.
So there, looking back in the record and in your records, is there any, is there any action by council at the time of the request, or action by the mayor, or was there action backed, are you saying you couldn't find any?
Well, like I say, we were third party, so we didn't get signed agreements between the development group and the city, okay? I'd learn those by talking to Jeff or talking to the developers. And then writing. Soon after, or? It is interesting on the guidelines that the city, like Jeff said, he remembers that guideline, we fulfilled every one of them, except, well, kept the wall, well, really, we've done them all. The water main thing is still under, even though I don't know if it's written down anywhere, but, you know, the city made it happen, the gas line relocation, the gas company actually came forth and said, we want to get it out from under the road, or whatever the city paid, I really don't know, they got done. You know, trusting that the water part of the, the story there, it's one of those problems.
Yeah. Mr. Fowler, where, this, this list of things in bullet points in your letter, is that something that was from your recollection?
No, I submitted it to Jeff.
That?
Back in that, like that nineteen eighty.
Okay, oh, eighty-six, okay, so, so there is actually a record of that, and you're right, the water and gas service to church would be relocated as required, so, and that would have been part of the agreement, right?
Do you have the entire letter that this was part of?
That's basically it. I get that, there was more than once that I submitted the guidelines.
I guess what I'm looking for is, at the conclusion of this letter, was there anything like, to Jeff, please respond, or let's talk about it, or?
I just kind of did it that way, then I see him and talk to him, and, you know, we worked down on this pretty much.
I guess, I've been at council for a little while, but not as long as you've been, and see, has there ever been a waiver of an assessment that you recall?
For a street assessment? Not that I recall it, really, it's always been related to frontage, so I'm not aware of any secondary agreement.
And if there was a waiver, it would be heavily documented, I would assume, it would be, it would be, I mean, if there was a waiver granted, that would be a black and white thing.
Well, it would have to be in the ordinance, right?
Yeah, right.
Because these are the assessments, that's right.
I remember we had a house on a corner at one point, and of course, the road in front and the road on the side were both being repaved at the same year, and that particular property owner wanted a waiver, and the city declined, and he sued us, and we won. So, I mean, they've requested it, I, that's one case I can remember in particular, and the court upheld the assessment.
So past councils have had?
That's the only one I can think of right now.
An exclusive policy of honoring the policy for these street improvement programs.
To your point on, I'm not sure that we've overlooked at all of our council minutes necessarily. I mean, it would probably have taken, to grant a waiver of actual assessment, I would think that it would have taken an action of council.
Oh, well, because when they come in, they want to wait, when they request a waiver of penalty and interest because of their tax bill, and that whole issue where they lost the tax bill or mailed it a day late, I mean, we've always had motions and seconds, you know, discussion, and then a motion or a second to usually deny, I don't know that we've ever granted it, I mean, I usually remember that they denied, request a wave penalty and interest, but those would have been in our minutes.
Yeah, I'm not certain that we reviewed all, I got dirty upstairs in the old box by the way.
I mean, maybe we, we've thought of all the asset on our minutes.
That's the first potential assessment the church has, I remember.
Right.
There was no reason for us to be assessed on Churchill until it was rebuilt.
It was long overdue to be rebuilt.
Was Newman ever been?
Newman, he made reference to, to Newman Avenue, I think when we overlaid Newman Avenue about ten years ago was the first time, I think it was a concrete street before that, so.
I don't know if it.
The dividing line was right near where Churchill is, it's an asphalt construction beyond that point, but it's a concrete pavement that was overlaid for the first time, the last time it was done, wasn't the first time it was overlaid, so there may not have ever been an assessment on that actual.
And whether we were a church, if that had anything to do with it, I don't know.
That would not have.
I don't know.
The other churches have been.
Pain isn't it? Well, I can tell you, like I say, you've met everything in the guidelines, and we were super sensitive because of that ten-year-before thing down on Grand Avenue, state facing those properties, which I would imagine would make you, I can. Yeah, that made the council members at the time very sensitive, very sensitive. I don't want to, I kind of want to back it, right, that it's that talk, and I want to get, does the CAO have the authority to enter into that kind of agreement without council's approval?
I would think that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sympathetic.
Sure.
I understand, but I don't know how.
Al, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I never, the church would never receive.
Research it more, look up the council records.
Jeff, or. I can tell you that, whether it was anything generated, I doubt it.
Well.
It wasn't a need, in a sense.
Yeah, Ron's looked at all the records he has for this particular project, the only question that I have, not that it's even relevant, is whether or not we ever waived an assessment before. We probably could determine that by looking at the assessment ordinances, it seems to me, if you were going to assess somebody, there'd be in the ordinance.
Because, as I presented, I think we had to understand there wouldn't have been an assessment in the beginning, so it's not like it should have even been there.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand, except that.
It's different than like Jan says, when you get one on your property that's already existing, and you fight it.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is people are struggling with the fact that there's actually no record of that.
I don't know.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Yours from my side, that's all I.
Yeah, I mean, written record, let's say.
Yeah.
No written record, and.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I got a half a banker's box full of titter-tat, you know, from the beginning of time on the Grand Avenue all the way through. I mean, we subsequently sold Grand Avenue, then we did some of the selling where the bank is now, and then got into this Churchill connection, somebody said, hey, timeout, let's think about making a connector road through there. It served us all well.
Yeah.
It really has.
Well, it's the council's pleasure.
I couldn't endorse or vote or advocate that we grant this waiver absent a black and white, you know, record that it should be, because that would be kind of like a discretionary thing that could open a can of worms down the road, too. I was coming to say, well, you've granted this one, and there was nothing to, you know, substantiate why you did that, on paper. So if we need more time, you know, if there's, if there's likely to be a record that would be uncovered.
Could we research, like, the council records or something around that time?
Certainly look at all of our minutes from the time, I mean, we can do it in a second sweep of any information we have, I mean, our.
You might have committee, maybe some committee recommendations, I don't, I honestly, and I was around when we did the connector road, I don't know if we went through committees on those, or, I don't think we look in that timeframe at committee meetings, maybe in reports and minutes.
But hypothetically, if there was a committee meeting that advocated that position, absent the ordinance.
One thing is that maybe the committee reported to council, and then the council acted on it, I'm just trying to kind of.
Counsel itself to act on it, but, yeah.
Do we need to, do we need to refer this to committee while we do the detective work? Or do we?
It's your question.
We just table it for a while or something.
Just table it, and let's type tomorrow?
You can refer it to staff, and staff will do whatever research of additional records that we have to try and uncover anything that might be related to the topics.
I'll make that motion, let it be tabled, and let staff have time to do more research.
Second.
We can report it during that.
Motion's made, and second, any further discussion? I actually have a question myself now, what does that do as far as the assessment ordinance then? Can we adopt that?
Well, I think the city needs to continue to move forward on the street assessments, I think our finance director might agree with that.
Right, right.
And so I think that we would include their assessment here, and then subsequently, if you decide to waive it or forgive it, you can always do that.
Okay, good enough. Any further discussion? We'll call phone.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitors?
My name is Jonathan Lang, I live at 374 Waterworks Drive, Fort Thomas, Kentucky, 41075. I by no means will be as eloquent as Mr. Fowler here in what I came to talk about this evening. I stopped in and got on agenda today with Ms. Kelly. As a resident of Waterworks, I've had several conversations with neighbors up and down the street, and over the last few months, we've had some severe spring and fall, and now winter storms that have come through, and we are experiencing a large amount of water runoff on our road, as noted by a lot of the debris that gets left, and mud and erosion from hillside. So one of the reasons I wanted to come here this evening is I wanted to make sure that council was aware of this large quantity of stormwater runoff and the contribution to erosion of the hillside on Waterworks Road. I do realize that over the last few weeks, there's been quite a few engineers and architects, and possibly the sanitation district have been out looking at the storm drains for that runoff, so I realize that it is probably, but I wanted to make sure that as a citizen I voiced our concerns. I was wanting to get a timetable of any work that might be done, or any upcoming projects for Waterworks Road, as that we might be aware, and then also wanted to make council aware of the increased speed and the increase in volume of traffic on Waterworks since the advent of the Newport Pavilion Shopping Center. I've been in residence about fifteen months, and there's been a drastic increase in traffic on that road, so as you can probably imagine, everybody's trying to target, do your shopping and such. But with that, I also was curious, in speaking with a few other neighbors, at some point in time, over the history of the great city of Fort Thomas, I believe there's been discussions, or it's been brought to council, the possibility of conversations involving a sidewalk on the north side of Fort Thomas for access for the residents who are primarily cut off since the advent of the fence that was put around the lake, that's the retention lake. So I was just wanting to know if there was comprehensive plan, if so, what that timetable may be, and if the residents would be able to be made aware of that beforehand, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ron, need to make sure.
Absolutely. Mr. Lang, I, with regard to the street surface itself, the city is aware of a number of issues down there, but not necessarily the drainage at your particular location, so, and I understand that you shared some information in the office when you were in earlier, so we can certainly take a look at that. I'm also not aware that SD1 has any type of project, although they're very active in the community with slip lining and replacement of sections of pipe, point repair, if you will, so we can certainly contact them to find out if they have a project that's planned. Ultimately, they would be responsible for the storm sewer maintenance, the road maintenance and the slippage would be the city's responsibility, and without, you know, getting anything ahead of where we are in the process, we are developing, and you'll hear us report later, about our street program that we do each year, and there has been some discussion at the staff level regarding Waterworks Road and the condition of Waterworks Road, that will be presented to the Public Works Committee of Council. It is addressing the slippage areas, of which there are multiple, and they have been addressed in the past on multiple occasions. Unfortunately, Waterworks Road, in addition to Tower Hill Road, have been kind of our two sore spots with continuing slippage, so that, that street is actually on our list to consider with Public Works Committee of Council, but I don't want to go on record as saying that it's something that will be done in our next program, but it will be evaluated in that session with the Public Works Committee. If there's anything that we can do from a staff level, we'll be happy to meet you and look at your frontage and, or any specific issue you have.
We have to speak one more, one more point to that, so I don't want to speak on behalf of all, all the neighbors and residents, but I will speak on my behalf, because I have a five-year-old daughter. We are very happy to be part of the Johnson School family, and, and that's part of the reason that we decided to move to Fort Thomas, and very proud to be here, but I just also would like to make council aware that there are a lot of benefits, especially on the north side of the road with the fact that there are no housing or gas lines, things like that, of where that may be considered part of comprehensive program, whether there may be bail grants or some type of grants that would be available through the state for that funding, to be able to do that, but just a few notes that I'd like to just mention. Increased accessibility to schools and business would be important, because it would be sellability for our homes along that, that's considered in things like herd ratings and MLS listings, so it would increase property values of homes, it would solidify an already pedestrian friendly community with the accessibility for all residents. It would, I believe it would help as well with the erosion of that hillside, but most importantly, there's about ten houses that are in that two-tenths of a mile from the corner of Taylor and Waterworks around the retention lake down to where the creek crosses Waterworks again. There's about ten or twelve houses, and if I'm, forgive me for not knowing the exact amount, but I believe that there's in excess of five to six children that are all of school age, that don't have accessibility to walk to school, but a lot of those kids are walking up and down. up and down the road with no sidewalks. So I, as a parent, as a resident, as a Christian, I felt like it was necessary for me to come here and just let council know that for me personally, I would like that to be in the conversation because I would really hate to see somebody be hurt.
And let me just add on that. With regard to sidewalks specifically, the reference that I had with the Public Works Committee had to do with the street surface and the maintenance of the road from stabilization. With regard to sidewalks specifically, the city does have a comprehensive replacement program that's in place, but it's exactly that, replacing existing sidewalks. Typically, and by policy, if there are no sidewalks existing on the front, we will consider them at the time that we do resurfacing, however they're not funded through any program that we have. So requests for additional sidewalks or extensions of sidewalks that you're refunding to, by city policy, it requires an outside source at this point in time. And you referenced grants, and I love your language. We'll borrow some of your language when we make the next grant.
Okay.
Because that's the type of thing that is important with grant writing. However, we would have to pair with some type of grant opportunity. It's typically how we address that. So, and we're always open to that possibility.
The Safe Routes to School grant, is that already finished?
Well, it's annual.
It's annual, okay.
There's funding cycles for most of those grants, and they're annual. I think it's actually under a different name now, but it's similar, similar type of, same concept.
So there might be an opportunity down the road to.
Right. We just made an application through South Bank or North Fort Thomas Avenue with the request of residents there. And we've not heard any disposition of that, whether it's been denied or accepted. But that's the type of effort that it would require, yes.
And there's just a, for a council pleasure, I'd just like to let you know that through like pedestrian and bicycle information and through A A R P also has a lot of valuable resources and links to accessibility to such grants. And like you said, with the walking school program. Also, to a council's pleasure, I would like to let you know that I have videos available of the water runoff. The road actually becomes completely inundated. Last large storm we had, I actually called, I guess that was about six weeks ago, I called and they had an officer come in. They actually blocked the road. So it's a little bit more than just a little bit of water. And I just wanted to make sure council was aware. So I thank you for your time.
And sure. And I'll just add one other thing with regard to the storm drainage. When we do street resurfacing, we work with all the utility companies. And I don't think anyone is going to not affirm the idea that the storm sewer system there perhaps needs to be addressed. Their surcharging, it actually lifts manhole bits and so forth. So S D one's aware of that. At what level we'd be able to address that, but we certainly try to coordinate that with any effort for making improvements on the street. So we'll be.
I thank council for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing this information to our attention, even if we didn't know it. Just mention that I think that's important for all citizens to do that. Hear the eyes, news on the grounds where we can make some improvements. So thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to address council? Okay. Fire Department monthly report. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman and members of council. I really have nothing to add to the monthly report. December monthly report was mailed out of your packets. However, would like to just bring you up to date on two grant opportunities, speaking of grants. Grants. Two grant opportunities. One, we have applied for and received a thirty-two-hundred-dollar grant from the Kentucky Fire Commission to purchase a new thermal imager camera. We will put that on Engine six oh one, our first out piece of equipment, which will give us two on there. Our units are about ten years old, so we're getting a little bit older. But this will be a new unit that we can put on there that'll give us a couple of people hands-on with better looking inside of the home, hot spots in walls, those kinds of things. So we're real pleased to be able to receive that grant. That is a grant that they issue us a check for thirty-two-hundred dollars. We pay the difference on the thermal imager, so that will work out real well for us. And again, kind of keeps us in line with getting those things from the Fire Commission. We're proud of that. The second thing is, is last Friday, we applied for again, a, the two thousand, actually two thousand and fifteen is how they label it, Assistance to Firefighter Grant for, again, self-contained breathing apparatus. Our self-contained breathing apparatus is over twenty years old. It's meeting some needs for us to purchase every year in the budget through the finance and C A O. And so again, we applied for that grant. We were down in the wire last time. They pointed out some things to us last September when we didn't get the grant. Just a couple of things we needed to tweak, and we did that. And they were very pleased with that on our application. So we've resubmitted this year in the grant period. We'll again hear probably the latter part of the year, sometime September, October. Again, I feel very good about this grant with doing the things that the federal government, FEMA has asked us to do on the grant writing process. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. We'll keep you apprised of what's going on. If we can get that grant, it'll be for about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to replace all twenty of our self-contained breathing apparatus. And again, something that we need to do is certainly will help the city offset that by getting that grant. So that's actually a ninety-five, five percent grant, five percent on the city and ninety-five percent from FEMA. So we'll keep you apprised of that. And I just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. Other than that, business as usual. It's cold, knock on wood, and slow, other than normal daily operations, and that's good. And I hope everyone in the county is that way also. So I can field any questions the council may have in regard to either the monthly report or anything in general regarding the fire department.
Move to receiving class.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call phone.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Chief Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman and members of council. I actually do not have anything new to pass on, which is already in front of you in the December monthly report. However, if you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Any questions? Move to receiving class.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Roll call phone.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. Any new business? Any old business? Finance committee report. Oh, I'm sorry. Skip to the end.
Thank you.
You all heard enough from me. I actually just have a few things to report. The annual audit has been completed near completion, so we'll be getting a report on that and be forwarded to the finance committee in the next month or so. I made reference to the 2016 street resurfacing program. Staff has done our evaluation. We've had our engineer involved with doing an updated evaluation and updated engineer's estimate. So we're working on our budget numbers. And so we're prepared to meet with Public Works Committee of Council. So we'll be asking that group to discuss in the next few weeks, to be able to report at the February meeting. And then included in the memo, you have an annual controlling report. We don't request here to be here to give a report. We certainly appreciate all the work that she does, sometimes thankless work, sometimes semi-dangerous or she would consider dangerous. But I have included, as you know, she works with a number of cities and she provides us with data of information of her activity, and I've included that in the memo. I did a comparative just from last year, and I do have other numbers from previous years if anyone has an interest in that. Just quickly, a couple of other things. The D A homes, we are working on final documents. We're a little behind where I suggested last time. But we do have, we have received final document on the, from Alladon, on the remediation of the lead paint and the abatement of the asbestos. So that document's prepared. We're working on our final draft of the escrow. We'll be submitting that into the D A, and the memo will be in their hands moving forward from there. We had a meeting with the developer last week, started looking past that, at the next issues that would be related to the project. So we'll continue with their progress on that end. And the only other thing I had were annual reports. Department has been working on annual reports, and you'll be hearing from them in the next couple of months. Didn't know if anybody had any other questions, but certainly.
I would suggest that perhaps the minutes reflect that Mr. Thompson is the new council member and has been sworn in prior to this meeting.
Is he properly acknowledged yet?
Yes. We should have said hello to everybody before the meeting, but I guess we can officially say welcome, John.
Thank you.
For the Andy. Okay. Or, finance committee report.
Report of disbursements, December twenty-second through January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. General fund, one hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Public Works Code Act Fund, seventeen thousand, seventy-three dollars and forty-one cents. Reoccurring debt service fund, sixteen thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. C P D revitalization, two thousand five hundred eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents. Waste fees, seventy thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and ninety-three cents. Police and fire pension fund, one thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, three hundred and five thousand, sixty dollars and fifty-six cents. We, the undersigned members of the finance committee, recommend that warrants number three oh one, three three seven, through three oh one, four four oh be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, chairperson, Mr. Peterman, member. Ms. Kelly, member.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Where are you sleeping tonight?
For the finance committee report. Any comments or questions? Roll call phone.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
All right. Ordinances and resolutions.
This is ordinance oh one, two thousand sixteen. It's a summary. It's an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, Campbell County, Kentucky. American Legal Publishing Corporation has completed the two thousand and fifteen supplement to the Code of Ordinances. Council will accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the law of Kentucky. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenfaden, city attorney for the city of Fort Thomas.
Okay, that's the first reading doesn't require any action.
This is a summary of ordinance oh, oh two, two thousand sixteen. An ordinance amending Title III, Section thirty-two point twenty-one E of the City of Fort Thomas, Kentucky Code of Ordinances by fixing the time of holding standing committee meetings of the Board of Council of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky. Title III, Section thirty-two point twenty-one E of the city's Code of Ordinances shall be amended. Council's standing committee meetings shall be held at the city building on the third Monday of each month, except in the months of June and September, when committee meetings shall be held on the first and third Mondays at six fifteen P M. When the day for holding a committee meeting is a holiday, the committee meeting shall be held on the next day. The summary was prepared by Jan Seidenfaden, city attorney for the city of Fort Thomas.
Jan, first reading.
This is a summary, although not so short. Ordinance number oh, oh three, two thousand and sixteen. An ordinance confirming the city engineer's estimate of the cost of the improvement and certificate of apportionment for the improvement of Arlington Place from its intersection with Alexandria Pike, U S twenty-seven to its terminus, Burnett Ridge from its intersection with Lester Lane to its terminus, Churchill Drive from Newman Avenue West to the city's corporate boundary with the city of Newport, East Southgate Avenue from its intersection with North Fort Thomas Avenue to its terminus, and North Fort Thomas Avenue from its intersection with Bel Air Place to Covert Run Pike, all in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereto, as submitted by the city engineer and is adopted and is approved by the Board of Council, approving and levying a special assessment against the abutting property owners and providing for its payment, directing the city clerk to publish an abstract of this ordinance, and directing the city treasurer to prepare and distribute the assessment bills requiring all abutting property owners to pay the improvement assessment. That special assessment rates are set out below per linear foot and fronting on listed streets are assessed against said real estate and the owners thereof, see attached Exhibit A, at the stated cost per foot. Arlington Place, city portion, ten dollars and fourteen cents. Property owner portion, ten dollars and fourteen cents. Final cost, twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Burnett Ridge, city portion, five dollars and three cents. Property owner portion, five dollars and three cents. Final cost, ten dollars and six cents. Churchill Drive, city portion, fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Property owner portion, ten dollars and fifty-seven cents. Final cost, twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents. East Southgate Avenue, city portion, seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Property owner portion, seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Final cost, fifteen dollars and two cents. North Fort Thomas Avenue, this excludes the additional cost of Fibre Mat and its installation. City portion, sixteen dollars and twenty cents, and property owner portion, ten dollars and eighty cents. Final cost, twenty-seven dollars. Payments for all improvements shall be due within forty-five days of the publication of this ordinance, and any assessment that is not paid when due shall bear a penalty of five percent per annum. An additional ten percent per annum penalty will be levied thirty-one days after the due date. And any unpaid assessment shall accrue eight percent per annum interest, except for those property owners participating in the installment payment plan. A property owner may have the option to finance the payment of his or her assessment bill over a specified period of time, if the total amount of the assessment is more than four hundred dollars. Any interested property owner qualifying for the installment payment plan shall initiate this process by completing an installment agreement form with the city's director of finance within thirty days. The fee is thirty-five dollars. This summary was prepared by Jan Seidenfaden, city attorney for the city of Fort Thomas.
Okay, we have another first reading.
We have municipal order M oh one, two thousand and sixteen. A municipal order appointing Roger Peterman as the Board of Council representative to the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Council of Government.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call phone.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peter, you can't vote. Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
I will point out that they had a meeting, their first meeting of the year, and it wasn't necessarily uneventful, although they did approve a route. I don't know if people have driven on five thirty-seven that essentially comes from I seventy-five near Walton all the way to Alexandria. And it's a dramatically different route. Maybe a long time before it's funded, but give a lot better access across Southern part of the county to I seventy-five.
Oh, okay.
Oh, did we? Yeah, we voted.
We voted. Okay. I thought John said something.
We voted. We already voted.
We voted, okay.
He was asking.
I did.
Oh.
Okay, I'll bring that to you. Okay, I'm bored. Yeah.
Okay. We have municipal order M oh oh two, two thousand sixteen. A municipal order reappointing Claude Manette as a member of the Fort Thomas Street Commission for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call phone.
Mr. Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
And we have executive order E oh one, two thousand and sixteen. An executive order appointing Hans Tinkler as a member of the Planning Commission of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
Just reported, no actions required. Anything else that'll go to the order? Not to, please adjourn. Thank you.
The other.